Okay.
Hold on, I'll say it.
Okay. All right. We'll call the meeting to order. Please sign your phone. Stand for the full allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, is there no agenda item? It's the...
Oh, it's this.
Add the ODE planning grant to your... Which will fall under other matters. We'll move on down. New business, dogs at large. The people have... There's nobody here for that. We'll table it for right now. Lake County Senior Center, two handicap parking spaces requested.
They... They would like two spaces. She didn't say where. And they... Somebody was supposed to be here, but I'm not sure. They called and asked to be on the agenda, so...
Is... Is it where they've requested them before?
Possibly. And they haven't been put up.
There she is.
There she is. You're just talking about her.
Perfect.
You guys will stay standing.
You can come closer, Zillian.
I'm making it awkward. Well, I have a couple of things that we have just to note. I made a couple of pictures of what we're hoping to do with the curb... Or, I mean, the parking area. Probably it's no big deal for you guys, but we would really like to have two ADA parking places. And if you look at the pictures I took, um... On the first... First and G corner. So, not the post office corner. Because there's so much traffic there. We thought going around to the ramp and all that wouldn't be so great. But, um... On the first and G, so next to the old COIC building is what we were kind of hoping for.
Your COIC used to be the old ramp building.
Oh, on the...
Isn't it first and G?
It's on G, first and G, yeah.
Yeah, first and G, north first.
Yeah. Yeah. So, probably overkill on the photos, but, um...
You can never tell.
Two would be nice. Um... There's a good ramp. There's a nice slope at that corner. Someone's using a walker or something. And the reason we were hoping for this is, um, we do have two ADA parking... Or, yeah, parking spots in our back parking lot. Our parking lot is small. And a lot of people don't necessarily use a wheelchair that have the placard, you know? But... So, they don't necessarily need the ramp, but they would like to park, you know, in our space at lunchtime. The whole block gets really busy, especially on Wednesdays, and you have people from all the other businesses parking along there. So, if we had two spots, that would be awesome.
So, the spot right in front of the door? The senior center door?
No. No. It's down on the corner.
Where this pickup is parked?
Yes.
Oh, and then the one right up to the...
Yes. So...
This one here?
The weird picture of the curb directly in front of our building. And I should have put my foot there or something. It's unusually tall. Don't park your car there if you have a lowered bumper. And that a number of times. And, um... It's kind of a high step for... For regulars.
Is this what you're talking about? To put the...
It's not right here.
No, I was just trying to get the street corner.
Okay.
Yeah.
This... This spot in this corner?
By the dark color.
Oh, so you want them side by side? You want the handicap side by side?
Well, that'd be cool. Or there's even a space in between so a door could open.
Yeah.
A little more room for a wheelchair and...
You'd have to take three spots.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That'd be awesome.
Yeah, taking three spots.
So, this...
But the two spots in back could be converted back into regular spots then? Or...
I don't know.
Or keep them?
Because that's where our...
No, they do. Okay.
That's where our ramp is.
Oh.
In the back.
So, would this give access... This would give them access to the ramp through the backside, right? Could also...
Yep. They could go follow the sidewalk around. Or just with a lot of people that are walkers, but don't want to, you know... They're still walking, but they don't want to park so far away. Coming to an event.
So, you would want like the first two spaces closest to the ramp. Closest to the... The corner. Closest to the corner.
Cut.
Yeah.
That's my hope.
What are the rules for that? Where's Donald?
I don't know.
Is there rules on that?
There's slope rules.
Slope, that's what I was saying.
We'll have to go see what the slope is. And I've got to crash course in that part. That's the change where we're going to talk about this. But, uh, we have to go see what the slope of the asphalt road is. Because they cannot exceed the...
Twelve... Is it 12 to 1?
Two point... 2.5 percent, I think. Or 2.8 percent.
Usually 12 to 1.
Yeah. So, we'll have to look at that.
Before we give the handicap spots in?
If you put it in and you call it a handicap spot and it has more than 2.8 slope to it and somebody gets hurt, town's liable.
But it's already in there.
No, it's not. Those aren't handicap spots.
Did you know that, Mike?
Yes.
So, okay. If the asphalt, we step out of the vehicle...
Because we build ADA.
Drops more than 2.8 percent to the curb. And we call that a handicap spot.
Well, I see what you're talking about. Okay, you're talking about the asphalt.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a liability there.
I thought we already had a handicap ramp.
No, it's... Well, the ramp falls under that too. The ramp can't exceed 2.8 percent or 2.5 percent. I don't remember exactly what it is at this point, but, um... So, we'll have to look at that. Just for liability reasons.
I like that.
I mean, it's a great idea, honestly.
It's a good idea.
But we've got to look at the liability and the slope of the road right there.
So, when can that be done?
Um, I'm gonna have to get, uh, what they call a smart level. I'm gonna have to order one. So, I'll probably take that.
We got Sean.
Sean lays down the pavement. Yeah, it's about 2.6.
Yeah, we should get that checked.
I... I'm gonna need to order a smart meter. I need to do... I need to order one anyway. So, I will get one ordered tomorrow. And as soon as it gets here, we'll go up and check that slope. Because it's not the only place to tell we'd use that as well, so... No, we use it on pipe drop and everything else.
So, you guys know how to use a protractor?
We can do that on the agenda for the next week.
Or, as I said, could you approve it with the SLAM? If this point...
I can do that for you.
Correct? Well, it might end up in a different spot.
Yeah.
So, if they could just be on the agenda next... They could suggest that. They hopefully don't have the answer by then and then we can figure out. And if... And if it's not a good slope, maybe you can look around and see if there's a spot that would be even, you know, that would work.
Yeah, we may have to adjust it depending on the slope of the asphalt curb.
Yeah, those are the two spots we're talking about.
Just so that we don't get somebody hurt on the way through. Um, so, I'll... I'll get that level order tomorrow morning. And then, as soon as I can, we'll do a little bit of work on that.
Okay. This all kind of came about, we were talking internally. We're a senior center and we don't have a handicap parking in the front. And the crisis center has a handicap too. So, we're like, that's kind of new.
Yeah, they got theirs... Two years ago.
Two years ago?
Yeah.
When they were building dirt code.
But is it... Is it a good spot? That's the question. Because there's a lot of them in Lakeview. That's...
No, they're...
That's what's been happening in Lakeview. You're just painting them in and they don't need to stay within those standards.
No, they actually did come in and... And go through the right protocol for that.
Good.
So, yeah, that did go through. Because that was all done through Anderson.
The one in front of the post office, I can tell you.
Yeah, I don't know anything about that one.
Those curbs are about, yeah, 200.
Yeah, I don't know why.
Like yours, yeah.
They must have been grandfathered.
I don't know. Is June 13th of the year?
Okay, yes, so next agenda.
So, I'll put you on June 13th with Andrea.
And I'll order... I'll order a smart meter.
And then we'll have a good idea of that then.
Yeah, thank you.
Or wherever it is.
That's a good idea.
And that's... Thank you for the note the other day.
And I also invite you all to the, um... I don't like the title of it, but Elder Abuse Awareness Month. We've, um, falling heavily on the awareness part. We're gonna have, yeah, I think it's our fourth or fifth year of having, uh, free barbecue for the community and resource tables and all this stuff. So, if I could leave a couple of flyers with you guys, please.
Yes. And I haven't got the... I haven't got the... Usually I get the, um, proclamation for this and they haven't sent it to me.
Ooh, I'll email. Would you please?
Thank you.
What was that?
Elder Abuse. For having a funder.
Right there.
Awareness.
Oh!
It's free lunch.
Oh, my goodness.
It is. Yeah. Andrea's gonna get me the proclamation.
Okay.
And we'll put that on the 13th meeting also.
Oh.
Just tomorrow.
Okay. Yeah. I'll get that all done too.
I'll give it to you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Andrea. Have a wonderful day.
You too.
All right. Next is the skate park.
Woo-hoo!
You've done a great job at the splash man. Three minutes.
Three minutes? Okay, you could... I can just hand you the paper and you can sign it.
It's something you do, you can't do that.
Okay, so, uh, let me stand up soon. So, uh, on the 18th of April, uh, we shared with, um, Michelle and... And Dawn, everybody else, the, uh, the form of a lease that would allow us to build out on that site. And so, uh, and, you know, so we left it with you at last meeting and said, you know, hey, take a look, talk to your lawyers or whatever. And then, if you have questions about the lease, please let us know. If it's okay, then we're ready to sign and, you know, some of it, Michelle or somebody can sign. Um, I noticed in looking over it before this meeting that there is one change that needs to be made, which, because we gave it to you in April, it said the start date was May 1st. Yeah, so we probably need to move that back to June 1st if we're ready to go. But if you have any questions about what's in the lease or the form or anything, Chuck and I are here to answer your questions.
We agree to it, but just had to have a date change, that's it.
Right, yeah.
Just want to change the date?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that was the...
Okay, so how about it? I'll bring... I'll change the date.
I think that'd be the easiest thing.
Yeah, I'll change the date and bring it over so that we don't have to mark it. There is... I also found a typo. There's a reference to a clause that says 14, it should be 13. I'll make that change too. It's real obvious because it's about, uh, condemnation and it just... It's referring to the wrong clause. So, I'll make that change too. And when I bring it by Michelle's office, um, we'll show you those.
Yeah, sure.
And we'll sign it, uh, either in front of her or we can sign it in the oversight.
Yeah.
Any other... Do you have questions?
Does it need to be notarized?
Leases don't normally need to be notarized. Uh, some people record a lease against the title to the... To the land, but in this case, it's the town, and so...
It's still on the line.
Yeah, you don't... You don't have a warrant or anything on that property, so you can't see a reason why you record it.
Yeah.
Other than to have it publicly available. But it's a... It'll be a public document in any case.
Yeah.
And, um, Michelle's team will keep a copy of it at Town Hall. Anybody wants to take a look.
Perfect. Yeah.
I'll bring it over tomorrow.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
The town... Urban renewal plan report. Should be delivered to the Lakeview Planning Commission and effective action, jurisdiction, and view and comment and course of truth requirements for the ORA 457.089.
Sorry, I thought these were... So, I think I have copies of everything. Here's what we're gonna need to do. Because the, um, council is the board for the Urban Renewal Agency, we need to close the regular session and open it to the Urban Renewal Agency. And then I'll tell you what we're doing. And then we close that and open it back up to regular session and approve it. So, here's that updated map. Just take one and pass it on. So, you need to close this, Ray.
Need to close this meeting?
And open it to the Urban Renewal Agency.
All right. This meeting is closed. Temporarily. And we'll open it up to the Urban Renewal Agency.
So, um, we've been talking about this. I have the Urban Renewal Agency report and the Urban Renewal Agency plan. The, um, changes that were made on these two documents was, um, to reflect the council's, um, lead and desire to continue to pay the library, um, the additional dollars that it may not... That would... It would not be receiving, um, during the urban renewal so that they wouldn't, um... So, that the...
They weren't missing their portion of the money.
Right.
They won't sell their ownerships.
But it wasn't just the library. It was the...
It was so, um, for the... So, it would pay 513.66 to the county library, 270.28 to the county extension office, 258.64 to the Lake Cemetery District to remove, um, any of the additional burden that the tax renewal agency might have on those taxing districts. So, while, um, what... What this does tonight is this allows me to, um, go to the different taxing districts and talk to them about what the council is doing with the Urban Renewal Agency, um, get their feedback. And by statute, we need to let it set for 45 days for any feedback from those districts. And then we'll move forward, um, and adopting it formally through council, so...
Is this voted on then by the people? Is it put on a ballot?
No. No, this is a council decision.
So, there's no way to know what the town would think about this? Right?
Um, we can have a public meeting. I can open that during the 45 days. We can have an open meeting. We did introduce it and, um, Nick Green did present it quite well during our meeting.
I thought he did too.
Yeah.
But...
I can... I can have another public meeting.
What do you think? What do you think people are gonna say? Yay or nay? What in other cities, you know, that have taxing services?
The others... The other cities, um, are having great success with it.
I know, but I mean, they've... They passed it pretty easy.
Yes, they did.
Okay.
So, this is basically just opening it up, but it's not finalizing it. It's saying, oh, we're interested in doing it.
Right.
And then we're trying to get public input about how everyone wants to proceed.
What was that?
Correct. Right.
Well, I don't know enough about it to answer questions from the public.
Well, like, yeah.
I think we will later, once we know more about it.
I can have another work session if you would like, and we can go over it again during the 45 days that it's open. We can go over...
That might help me personally. Or I can just kind of talk to them.
You can... You can come and talk to me anytime. Yeah. Um, overall, I believe it's a good tool. Um, it's something that if the council sees that it's not working, you can close it down.
Well, I do have...
Well, we knew that by now.
So, um, this just allows us to have something that we can, um, use as an economic development tool for the town.
Well, I know that if... If somebody asks me, well, how much of my tax is gonna go up on? I... I don't know. I couldn't tell them.
You say zero. It won't go up any... Only what? It goes up 3 percent.
Well, somebody's gonna... They're gonna say, I don't believe that.
I know, yeah. That's true.
That's what I'm sure I'm gonna get. So, but... That's always what you say.
And certainly, um, you can have them come talk to me at my office anytime. Um, maybe the council would like to have two sessions within the 45 days that it's open for comment. Um, certainly, I'm gonna be going over to all of the other taxing districts to explain it to them that they're needing, um, and bringing feedback to them.
So, you'll be also going to like the school district and to all of the taxing districts?
It doesn't affect the school district.
I know it doesn't affect that, but it would still need to go and present to them and then also to the ESD Board and the county.
And the commissioners.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So... Well, I would make a motion that we open the URA plan adoption procedures, um, to...
Do I have to close this one first?
No.
No.
To open the URA adoption procedures so that we can be having more input from the public and notifying the taxing districts and with, you know, within the next 45 days.
Can motion made. Do you have a second?
I second it.
Motion made in second. Do them a favor.
All right.
Okay.
Then you close this... Then you close the URA?
Yeah.
And then you open the second one.
All right, we'll close the URA section now and we'll go back into the regular section. That is done. All right. Lake District Summer Food Service Program. The seeking approval is McDonald Park, our...
I didn't print it, but you're on page. Okay. You just told me that.
Did you open another meeting again?
I did.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I went down here. Sorry. Sorry. Pardon my interruption.
That part can be done by June 12th?
It's supposed to be done June 10th.
Okay. Do I need a motion on this?
We have to discuss some things, okay?
Yeah.
First.
Oh.
Okay. So, I talked with Kristi Albertson today regarding that. She had some concerns because of the, um, the lunch program that they do and because it's a federal program, there's rules and regulations that they have to follow. And so, their concern is that will, if it is not done, would they be able to still eat on the site? Would there be an area available for them to provide an eating space on the site?
No, I don't think it's safe to have those kids in there without a footprint, but...
Okay. And then, if that's the case, then they would like to know if the pool park can be used as a temporary site until that park is open.
I'm fine with that.
I don't see a problem with that.
And I talked to the guy that runs that. I can never pronounce his name.
Harbinder.
Harbinder. I talked to him early on in this Friday and he said if they had to go somewhere for a week or two, they could. And, you know, I told him and I talked to Charlie Troy a couple of times. I prefer them not to have to. The way, if they hold their schedule as they're doing now, we should be done and cleaned up by June 10th.
Right, because June 12th is their first lunch day.
Yeah.
Is the first lunch date.
Monday the 12th.
Monday the 12th.
Yeah, because Saturday's the 10th.
Right.
So, yeah, Monday the 12th.
Right. Monday the 12th.
So, they're supposed to... That last week is just supposed to be cleanup and touch up. So, we should be good.
Okay. So, basically, we can let them know that they can use the pool park?
As a backup.
As a backup until they can... Are able to come to the other side.
And I know they like McDonald Park because most of those kids are in that neighborhood.
In that neighborhood area, yes.
So, it's easier for them to get there.
Right.
But the plan is to have that ready for them.
Okay. So, if it's not ready, oh...
They'll move some of the tables together at the big park over there.
Okay.
So, that way they have...
They have to.
Two or three tables together to put their stuff.
They do that around that south side.
I ran it at both parks. I did 11 o'clock to noon for little... Or 11 to noon for the big kids and then noon to 1 for down at the park.
Yeah.
So, but yeah, the plan is to be done. I'm gonna try to update tomorrow on the order up because I haven't been there the last two days. So, I'm kinda curious what's going on.
Okay. Okay. So, I think we're good then. I'll let, um... I'll let... So, we need a motion on this then, right?
Yeah.
So, I would make a motion that we, um, allow the Lake District Summer Food Service So, I would make a motion that we, um, allow the Lake District Summer Food Service Program to use the McDonald Park to serve lunches during their one-hour service commencing on June twelfth and concluding on August eighteenth. And if the park is not in a completion date by that, when they open up, they will be able to use the pool park to provide their lunches.
Temporarily?
Right, temporarily, yep.
My second, ma'am.
Motion made in second, those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Alright, move on down, intergovernmental agreement for nine-one-one dispatch management services.
So, um, Dad, you said that you had a conversation with Charlie about the M O U for nine-one-one?
Did we talk about today? All the changes that I said were.
Yes, I did, I'm sorry. I'm like, wait a minute, so much has happened today that I don't remember which day it was.
I thought you were talking to one of those guys over there, I said they're pretty quiet.
Yes, I did talk to him about the M O U and he had no issues.
There's just changes as fine as is?
Okay.
That's good, that it's ready to.
He said all the changes that he discussed I couldn't make.
And I think that everybody discussed.
Mm-hmm. I'm sorry, the day is just ran together.
Okay, so what day are we on?
I don't know.
Do you ever get the real put on down there?
No, there's still an issue and the fire chief is here this evening to talk about it.
There you have it.
I know.
Okay.
Do we need a, made a motion on this?
Need a motion on this one.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the intergovernmental agreement for nine-one-one dispatch management services. Does anyone have to read on that one? Is that all you need, Michelle, for that one?
Yeah.
Oh, I'll second you.
Motion made in second, those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, council.
Alright, let's move on down, resolution eleven forty-eight in the matter of adopting the annual operating budget for the town of Lakeview for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
Mayor, we have to table this, it's not ready.
Oh, okay, alright, table that one.
I was gonna move on to anyone.
You were?
Yes, it's not ready. That's why I talked to Charlie about it.
I like your page.
I'm being funny.
It's not ready, you didn't have one.
I got to go with you, Jay.
I am.
Alright, let's move on down, resolution eleven forty-eight in the matter of adopting the annual. Oh wait, eleven forty-nine, resolution authorizing the town manager to enter into certain contracts on behalf of the town.
And I will, I will say that I would, I think that we need to have more discussion on this because I think that it needs to be where, um, we see what is being written checks-wise to the council. Anything over a thousand dollars, I would say, in my mind, in the way that we know what's being written and who it's going to. Any contracts would need to come to us, okay, in the sense, you know, and then once the contract is in place, then it becomes already part of things, we, you know, we just need to be updated on what's going on. But we need to be able to see the checks and what's being paid.
Should it be more than a thousand or not, do you think?
Up to the council. I think, checks-wise.
Checks-wise.
From a fire standpoint, one part can be a thousand dollars for me, so.
That's the only thing I'm saying.
What I'm saying is I want to see the checks after they're written.
So anything over.
So that I can see if there's a pattern of a whole bunch of things being written out, then why is that, you know, why is that?
That makes sense, I, I, I just, I was worried that, you know, if we have to get approval for every thousand dollars.
No, 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 no.
Bottle neck or.
I would just want to have it that way and currently it's a five thousand dollar spending limit anyway, so, um, and I guess so, I just want further discussion on it.
Just trying to alleviate problems.
Yeah.
Okay, so, we'll table that one and have a work session?
Sure.
Mm-hmm. You want to add that to the work session?
Yes.
Sure, yeah.
Alright, well, let's move on, department reports.
Dark Sky.
No, Dark Sky canceled out.
They're gonna come in June thirteenth.
We're just showing it related.
I'm sorry, yeah. So, Michelle, you wanna go first or you wanna let the other two?
I'll let the other guys because they have the time.
Okay, I would go with the.
Although I do have to say, Ronnie Voe, this is the first time he has presented to council, so.
Why don't you go first?
Go ahead, grilling.
Then you get to get.
Alright, Ronnie, go ahead.
Alright.
Thank you for the vote of confidence. Hello, everybody, my name is Ronnie Voe, um, I've kinda, uh, kinda stepped into a show, so, I believe we've, I, you know, sent over, um, if anybody has any questions, we can start with that and, um, you know, just with the, the call volume, I don't know what is expected of me, but, uh, you know, we, we on that list. Uh, I have not gotten the time, uh, to do like what we did in March and then compare to February and things like that. Right now, my main concern is the install of the new equipment that we have in our, our building for the new mapping and the new telephone system. In fact, the gentleman is there in the wireless putting that in as we speak, so I need to get back over there and help him. Um, and the other thing I'm trying to do is make sure there's somebody in the seat taking all of my calls. So, after that, the release date, the turnover date for the new equipment and the new technology is the end of June, hopefully nineteenth to twenty-first of June. We'll have a lot of training before then, online, in-house training, they're gonna bring down, uh, some people that'll help us out on the equipment itself. After that, then I will kind of focus on the other ongoing problems or issues that we have. But those are the two items that I am actually just kind of focusing on right now. So if you have any questions.
Has he had any paper helping at all getting people to apply for jobs?
Um, you know, I have not had any feedback on that.
I did send four applications over to Sheriff Taylor.
Okay.
So he does have those.
So, some people are starting to apply maybe?
And of course Sheriff Taylor is saying that it's kind of not his ballgame yet, so.
It is today, right now.
Oh, really?
We just sent it yet.
Okay. Good to know.
Done.
So, uh, that would be great, um, you know, I heard rumors that they have a high reprise over sheriff's office, so therefore I'm kind of curious if we're gonna fill the last two or three positions that we need to go to his schedule, so.
Is that just for the sheriff's office, is that for nine-one-one also, or?
I do not know, since I just heard the rumor today and heard the information here today, so I'll have to have the conversation.
I'm meeting with Commissioner Schumberger tomorrow one o'clock, I think I'll report surprise there.
Yeah.
When a person gets hired and goes to D P S S T is this, the computer system that they get trained on, but once they come back from D P S T, they'll have to learn this as well.
They're gonna have to learn this as well. I'm not sure which one D P S S T is using, but it's up to the county which system they use, but ninety-two percent of all counties are using this system, so, um, you know, more likely they're gonna train them on it up there, so. Um, and, you know, they're, they're going to learn, our counties are very unique, they actually get experience before they go to D P S S T, they actually sit on the desk for months. In bigger communities, they actually hire them and send them right off to the academy, then they don't know what they're doing, they learn everything fresh and new. Well, our people actually, you know, it's like, well, what's so hard about that? They've been doing it for months, you know, so, they have, uh, they have experience when they go there, so, and we have several people going this fall that have been hired last fall, so, uh, we have an eighteen-month period of, uh, before they get signed off on everything for their training, so.
Do you think that's too long? Because I know when I applied to do that job, I sat in the back room and read the manuals for about four months, and I took another job in between that because I couldn't wait that long.
Well, in actuality, the.
You know what I mean?
Yes, yes. You know, it all depends on the person, um, you know, some people have taken the test and passed it first time, first day, and some people have taken it four times, you know, and, uh, but we are putting them in the seat to listen, then they start taking phone calls.
Yeah, I never had that opportunity, I had the opportunity to look at the back room.
So, you know, we're, we're trying to get people going faster, but you know, with this day and age and even the staff that I have, you know, it's, um, it's, it's a different generation.
Right.
And it takes a little longer, they don't understand certain things, and take, you know, like a D zero seven, we just had this issue the other day, when somebody gets pulled over and is arrested for DUI, you have to do around D zero seven. Well, we don't do DUIs that often, and we have six or eight people that, you know, this person does it twice, this person does it once, and then the five or six haven't done it at all. So, until some things come up, you really don't get that experience. So the only way you get experience over there is going through the.
So, yeah.
Yeah, so therefore, you know, I'd, I'd like to set up a training system, kind of a manual where, okay, this is what we're gonna do today, this is what you're gonna learn, you know, and just try to cover all of the aspects of it, even if you haven't done it.
The things that might come up.
Exactly. You know, there's, you know those manuals where, you know, there are two books this thing, you know.
I thought there was three.
Well.
I thought there was three books, yeah.
There are, yeah, there are two books out there.
Maybe I've read the first one twice.
But, you know, we have a lot of, you know, N C I's books, that is, you know, everything that's ever made has a code.
Right.
You know, and every type of anything has a code, so, you know, we have several books that we have to reference and things like that, but, you know, the biggest thing about the ledge manual is, you know, like lawyers, you don't, we don't remember everything.
It's universal, yeah.
Yeah, it, it teaches you how to look it up.
Right.
But, uh, no, you know, there's a lot of things in the future that I'm kind of hoping to implement, but like I said, right now, two, the most two important things is the state's hundreds of thousands of dollars that they're sending our way and the equipment sending you to the room and making sure we have somebody to answer any of our calls. Other than that?
Honey, I really like this ongoing projects, keeps us informed of really what's going on over there.
Right.
Because we never knew before, so I really like this.
Okay, yeah, I'm, you know, and it's been two weeks since I typed that up, so we're a little farther along, so.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
If you're fine, I'm gonna go help the gentleman put it in.
Okay.
Have a good night.
Thanks.
Okay, Jesse?
Did everybody get a copy of my report from April? I can kind of summarize.
Okay, good.
Review later.
What would be my call?
The, uh, schedule's still the same, uh, we did hold two eight-hour Saturday trainings last month and a six-hour Monday night training, but still, uh, meeting first Monday of the month, trainings every Monday after, uh, primarily focused on wildland training last month. Uh, we completed two prescribed burns for fifteen acres, which is kind of a new thing for the department, um, uh, one in town and one up Bullard Canyon. Um, helped get rid of some hazardous fuel buildups here and there that we were asked to help out with and then training at the canyon. Uh, that was in cooperation with the Forest Service and B L M, they used that for a fire investigation class as well. Um, equipment, we had pump testing scheduled for man, having to push it back to the ladder, we just keep running into one issue after another on the ladder as far as valves and getting that ready for pump testing, uh, found another leak on it the other day. The other, our primary engines are ready for pump testing, it's just the ladder, we're waiting, trying to get in shape before we bring anybody out. And that is a five thousand dollar inspection for the ladder itself and fifteen hundred dollars to pump test it, so, uh, the other trucks are about fifteen hundred to pump test. Um, still standing about twenty-three active members, we lose one, we gain one, keep going back and forth. Um, have another couple of applications to look at for this month. Um, calls for service last month, four fires, uh, the highlight of that was one mutual aid response, the duty officer rig responded to a call in Thomas Creek's area, arrived approximately eight minutes before the next arriving engine and was able to save a house that was about to be impacted by fire, so.
That's good then.
Yeah, so it, um, probably saved a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of, uh, personal belongings and a home, so, yeah, it went really well, uh, also saved, uh, two barns, very large barns and machine shed and a variety of miscellaneous equipment as well, so, that was a good save. Um, other calls, a couple law enforcement assists, hazardous conditions, uh, ninety-six burn permits last month were issued for our area, which is good, uh, a lot of smoke in the area, but that means people are getting rid of debris buildups that they've got at their house, so we're, a lot of people are doing their part in cleaning up in the community, so that's very good. And only, uh, I think two of them escaped, so, we caught them small, so. Uh, additional items, we continued monitoring the flooding potential through April, uh, awesome job for the public works guys keeping everything clear all season.
It was like phone calls when you, when you're driving around too.
Yeah.
You get the alert once.
So, yeah, those guys did an awesome job of keeping things clear, we would have certainly had flooding, more flooding issues if they wouldn't have been on, keeping the drainage just clear, so. Uh, in my report, I did include, uh, some facts from the National Volunteer Fire Council, um, just for reference, uh, I'll get to where this is going, but the number of volunteers nationally has dropped from eight-hundred-ninety-seven thousand to, in nineteen eighty-four, to six-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand in twenty-twenty. Um, number of calls per year on average has risen from eleven point eight million to, in eighty-four, to thirty-six point six million in twenty-twenty. There's a massive increase in training requirements, uh, in that time period as well, as far as hours required for volunteers. Uh, uh, some of the issues we run into, uh, are that have been identified nationally is why we're losing volunteers, is that increased time for training, uh, decreased time for families, more two-income families out there than there was in nineteen eighty-four, so both parents working a lot of time, um, which has caused a lot of departments to start converting to paid or partial paid, and we're, so just for reference, we're kind of going the opposite direction, going from partial paid to all volunteer, which is kind of a step in a different direction than a lot of communities, and a lot of communities' hand has been forced in this direction, so, um, I think we can be successful with this, but I guess that, where that's taking me is my budget request for the year, so, um, just for reference, it takes a minimum of six personnel, um, staffing a fire engine to make an interior attack on a structure fire, to do any kind of rescue or anything like that. Uh, the cost of six paid personnel for twenty-four hours a day is approximately three-point-two million a year, so I think that's out of the budget, not in the realm of possibility, so it, what I'm trying to emphasize is the importance of taking care of our volunteers and what, what they provide to the community. So I guess, getting down to it, uh, my proposal for this year is a five percent increase in our budget from, for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, and what that goes into is we have at least twenty years of deferred maintenance on equipment, our buildings, um, and then that also includes a, an incentive program to help reward our volunteers and hopefully start recruiting more volunteers. Um, those are the two big things, I think I sent a, a budget over for review at some point. Um, but, yeah, kind of where, what I'm getting at is the importance of taking care of our volunteers and what they, the service they provide to the community is fiscally, uh, pretty important, so, um, how we do the budget, you know, kind of varies, you know, what, what account things come out of, but that, my budget took into account some of those maintenance things, the roof, uh, depreciated out over a couple-year period of time, but we need to start reinvesting into the buildings and into the equipment more over, over the next ten, twenty years, so. Um, I guess the, switching to an all-volunteer department, I guess my worry is I don't want to take away from the budget we already have when we have so much deferred maintenance out there that we need to take care of, I think this is the time to start catching up rather than go back to the state we were in, so, just something to consider, um, still a lot of room for negotiation there, but I would like to increase it just slightly. Um, grants, we were not awarded the O S F M wildfire mitigation grant or the engine program grant, uh, fortunately, we haven't heard anything on our FEMA, A F G grant for communication radios. Um, I have sent out an I G A for review, and that would, that I G A would be for the creation of a, a combined council to help manage the department of the town, the rural, and the volunteers as equal partners in managing, so, um, we can discuss that further, but I'd still like to keep that on the docket for discussion and for your review. I think that will go a long way to giving volunteers, um, some buy-in and feel like they're a part of the management decisions that get made that affect them, they're the guys putting in all this time and effort into keeping the community safe, so. Um, other things, we sent three volunteers to D P S S T Spring Fire School in April, and I talked about the prescribed burning and also covered the duty officer at its first true house save, so, and that's pretty much all I have. Any questions?
Yeah, to the best of your knowledge, you know, we had a real wet winter, and I always heard that if there's a wet winter, then more stuff grows up there, so we have more fire combustible material. Do you think that's the case this year, when you were up there?
Um, yeah, there's potential, I think the fire season will be delayed for wildfire season this year, um, you know, as well as I do, this area always dries out at some point in time, so we might just have a shorter season, but it will still have fires.
And later.
Yeah, later in the season. Um, one thing we are seeing is storm track patterns so far this year, have been coming through this area with pretty regular, uh, with regularity, through Lake County especially, we've picked up a handful of fires already from lightning already this year. Uh, they are, they have one they're managing on the Klamath side that's gonna be about eleven hundred acres when they're done, right now, uh, and that was just an opportunity, it was within a burn unit, they were able to expand it, but it, there's still kind of semi-dry conditions and pockets around the county. Uh, the Fort Rock area, kind of a corridor through there from what I've seen is relatively dry, uh, been out in the desert, uh, there's pretty wet areas, but there's also pockets of dry areas, so it's kind of hit or miss, the one, like you said, though, the vegetation does come up on years like this, and I think when we get fires in the desert, uh, this year, they have more potential than they do in other years, so, and when we get into the forest, we'll have plenty of fuel there, and it just depends on where we get the starts, where the storms come through, what kind of lightning we get out of them, but we'll still have fires. Last year was a slow year, and within Skavamp area, I want to say we had three-hundred-and-twenty, three-hundred-and-fifty fires, so, the, the public doesn't get to hear about that all the time, but there's still always a whole lot of fires going on, so, just, it kind of depends on where they land, how dry it is, where they hit, and what kind of fuel bed they land in, so. I would anticipate that, uh, probably end of July will be fire, the start of a real severe fire season for us this year, whereas in years past, it's been June or even April some years.
April, how many, June.
Okay, how many, has the council seen the post that Thomas Creek Westside put out? Okay, I'm gonna read you that post, stay standing. Says, "On April twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three, at about eleven-thirty a.m., Thomas Creek Westside Fire was dispatched to a ranch on Highway one forty west for a reported barn fire threatening a resident. Initial responding officer requested assistance of Lakeview Fire. Chief Morris of Lakeview Fire was first on scene with a quick-response S U V that contained sixty gallons of water and foam paint. Upon arrival, the fire was in, within twenty feet of the residence, Chief Morris was able to stop the fire prior to reaching the residence. Thomas Creek Westside and Lakeview Fire Department engines and water timbers quickly arrived and began the fire attack. A large barn had just begun to ignite and was extinguished, a large shop was threatened by fire and extinguished. With no involvement of the shop, several pieces of farm equipment were extinguished, a large amount of corralled surrounding grass were burning and were extinguished." A large amount of corralled surrounding grass were burning and were extinguished. Rural Fire, Volunteer Fire Department depends on availability of volunteer firefighters. Today, Thomas Creek Westside was blessed with a quick response from Lakeview Fire, which resulted in a very positive outcome for the landowners. Partnerships between departments is absolutely a key to a successful outcome. We thank the volunteers of Thomas Creek Westside and Lakeview Fire for the hard work they put in today. Please remember that even with wet conditions, fires can be wind-driven and escape containment. Always have an adequate water source available and do not burn during warm, dry conditions. As always, Thomas Creek Westside needs volunteers who are willing to drop everything and respond with a neighbor in need." Jesse, thank you.
Good job.
That made off very well.
It did.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it, and thank you for supporting the purchase of that rig and putting it together. That's a quick turnaround for payoff, I think, as far as things like this go. We don't often get to see results that quickly.
My wife saw that the other day, and she said, "What's that, what's that?" Oh, I said, "Now, that's something new the fire department got." I didn't think they had any money for that. I said, "Oh, yeah, they got money." That was my wife. Yeah, we got money.
So, I guess.
I had to explain what that was for.
Darn it.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yep, absolutely.
So, Jesse, in the budget, where would you want to add money? Because, you know, it's more than what it was last year. It's almost forty thousand, forty-five thousand.
So, Jesse, just so that you know, with taking away from other paid firefighters, your budget is still, we're supplying you for two-hundred-and-thirteen thousand dollars. That allows twenty-five thousand dollars to go towards your volunteers, however you wish to.
So, I had a budgeted in approximately a hundred thousand dollars for incentives over the course of the year, and that included stipend program for per-call, per-training. And a fifty thousand dollar, was it around fifty thousand dollars to start building a truck replacement fund annually? And then a pretty sizable chunk of money to start putting towards capital improvements on the building, so.
I like it. Thanks for what kind of incentives do you give the volunteer?
I was looking at like fifteen dollars for showing up for training and paid out twice a year. And they build a little pool of money and get like a thousand to two thousand dollars once before Christmas and once in June, so.
I was just curious.
Yeah, it's kind of what we're, the program I was looking at initially, so. So, you know, the volunteers that I have, they're more than happy to show up. This, this incentive program is more about the significant others and showing them a benefit. It's like, hey, it was a little Christmas bonus. The guys, they love being there and they want to be there all the time.
This is money for your husband being missing.
It's kind of what it boils down to, is where the real benefit of this little program is. It's for the significant others that are suffering at home and watching the kids while we do this thing.
You guys do a, I can't remember, do you do a dinner at the Elks Club?
We do every year.
That's what I thought.
And, and we've been trying to do more events that are catered towards families and things like that. Have, quarterly, we've been having like a family dinner, a family slash dinner slash meeting and things like that. So, trying to get the families more involved and, you know, starting to build up the fun.
Just for fun, you know?
Yeah.
Time to do.
And it has been a lot more fun recently, so. Getting a little bit more involvement, and it'll take time to get some traction. And, but, yeah, that's part of building this program, I think. Along the lines of that post from Thomas Creek, you know, I've been talking with them and New Pine Creek. And ultimately, my goal, and it sounds like Thomas Creek is on board, of eventually combining all of our departments in this valley into one cohesive unit. We're starting to work together a lot better than we have in the past, but there's definitely some advantages financially for efficiency and things like that as being one department. There's, we have a lot of redundancy that we could get rid of and having, you know, combining all of our memberships could free up a lot of.
Well, if you have more people involved, like we did with R3, you might be able to get more grant, grant money if there was more people participating. If you have Westside and New Pine Creek and you guys and whoever.
For grants, it's going to look a lot better if we can say we, instead of twenty-three members, we have fifty members that we're trying to outfit and things like that. And there's also efficiencies to be gained in the number of trucks. You know, there's a lot of duplication between us and Thomas Creek. They have a lot of the same things. We could probably get rid of a few things here and there. Station-wise, in the long run, we're gaining, there's some efficiencies to be gained by combining. So, there's a lot of advantages to it if you can all get along. Right now, we have the right people in place to start moving in that direction, so.
That's good.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks, Jesse.
All right, Charlie, you're up next.
No, that's good.
Oh, you want those guys? All right.
Those guys.
Public Works?
Yeah. Well, Public Works, I don't have any documents for you. As we all know, it's been kind of chaotic between billing issues and leaks for the last, basically, month. Guys are doing good. Everybody's working. Right now, we're in the process of trying to weed eat and mow down our places, our wells, our lift stations, so we don't have the same thing that's happened last year where it was four-and-a-half feet tall and Scott couldn't go tell that guy to mow his front lawn because he said, "Well, look at the town's property." So, I'm trying to get that done right now. We're gearing up, hopefully for the smart meter installs to start.
Can that Perez kid come over and do a lot of that weed eating? Part-time guy you got working over here?
Scott?
Yeah?
He's doing it.
Oh, perfect.
I got everybody doing it.
Everybody down doing it.
Oh, what I was going to say, we're getting ready to start meters whenever that breaks free. You know, it's chaos at the shop. I don't know if you've seen pictures. We've got, how many semi-loads of pipe down there? Three, three full semi-loads of pipe we've got. It's, yeah, it's going to be interesting.
It looks like a plumbing, plumbing system.
Yeah, it does. It almost looks like a plumbing store. We'll cover that here. Yeah. A lot of our routine, we got our sweeper back on the street, so I got it running this afternoon finally, trying to get some stuff cleaned up. Our sewer truck, Scott got the parts picked up, so we can get that put back together Thursday, so at least we got that back on the road again. SCADA has been installed. I was going to try to have a thing up there on the computer for it, but I didn't get time. It basically, it's kind of like a map. It's hard to see. We can literally just push on one of those little green things. That shows our lift station ready. It shows the flow. It shows how deep it is. It says if there's a power situation. There are a whole bunch of things. So, that right there itself, I just actually got access to it today. So, that's going to free up an hour, probably an hour and a half a day per person. They don't have to go read these numbers. We can do it all right there on the computer. So, that's a good thing. Couple of guys aren't real thrilled about having it, but that's life.
So, with that new work order program, we've had it for how many months now?
November?
Probably three or four.
Three or four. Started actively using it, and then with what happened. We're still trying to put it in as we can. The front desk, I got Doris lined up on it, so when she gets these calls now, she can shoot them off to us.
So, can you figure out a difference in how much money we've saved between, like, last year?
Oh, yes. I'll be able to do it with this. It was basically when I presented it to you, having this installed, that number in that year, I forget what the number was. That's how much we'll save. And that was just in the all-call time of it. That's not the daily. That was just weekends and holidays, so.
I'd like to see that number.
I can get you, I can get you that number.
Like maybe you can see that number?
And I can do it, because Saturday's when they're out doing it, because right now they're, they get X amount of time for their contract.
I understand that part.
Yeah, and if you, that's something that we're going to have to look at when it comes to negotiation time because I'm not going to pay for something they're not doing.
Right.
So, but this, I can do it. I mean, basically, whatever their wage is, five days a week during the regular week and then Saturdays and Sundays, I can give you that number.
Compared to last year?
Compared to last year.
That'd be nice to see.
Because all I got to do is take last year's number for the year, and then I can take and do this number for the year. Time savings, that's going to tell you the difference.
Cool, yeah, I might see that.
And it's, not only that, it's going to save all the false alarms. Or, well, maybe it's running, maybe it's not. I don't know. So, there ain't going to be that after-hours callouts that are fake, so. Or, maybe not necessarily fake, but were they really a call-out?
Right.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, because you need a vector.
Yeah, we need a van. Did you, you happen to seen our situation?
Yeah, I saw it. This is what we're.
This last month, we've been so inundated with leaks that I actually had to call Scott Mowley and say, "Hey, is your back truck available?" We just can't, we can't, and some of them are in the middle of the road. We can't put those off. So, I had to do that. I mean, it's just, I hate to say that I need, I need, but, I mean, Charlie, you see it multiple times on occasions.
Why are there more leaks in the summer, this dumb question, I guess, than in the winter times? Is it because the ground's frozen and?
Part of it, you don't see it in the winter.
The ground dries out, the sugar settles.
Yep.
Then they just.
And stuff settles and.
And in the winter, they don't.
In the winter, I really don't see, I don't think you see it.
I was going to say, you never, you know, we never see it.
How much should we spend on just rental on the back truck right now? This one, or just one month, one month?
One month? If I use it like every day for a month, like I'd use it, I'm thinking he's probably two-hundred dollars an hour. I don't know. I haven't got a bill.
Two-twenty-five.
Two-twenty-five an hour. So, if I use him eight hours a day, even four days a week, two-twenty-five times that, times four a month.
Does that make enough repayment, maybe the difference? That'd be something.
And it's not, is that, I mean, if you look, if you saw.
Sounds like we're using that much in leaks right now.
Yeah, and it's not just for leaks. That's the caveat of it. And if you were able, if you noticed, I don't know if you, you saw them too much. Literally, with that truck, I was able to break that crew in half. And they could go and start it, and then another crew came and finished it or backfilled it. So, we were able to, they, they broke their record. They got four leaks. Three of them were mains in a day.
Be nice to see the differences.
So, two-twenty-five times eight?
Yeah, I'm going on an eight-hour day.
Times?
Times four days a week.
Four.
Times four months, four, four weeks in a month.
That's twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Wow, that's a.
And how much is the back truck, two-hundred thousand?
Maybe it would actually be about a hundred-and-fifty, and seventy-five of that would be his man. His probably operator.
So, you're probably looking at a hundred-and-fifty now for just the truck.
And depending on what we find, what we look at, the amount of money that I'm allowed to look at. If we're going to get something, we need to get something that's not decrepit.
Oh, no, we want a good one. If we're going to get something, we're going to get right.
Me and Scott have seen numerous ones when we were signing the river, we've talked, and they could go anywhere from, I mean, one of them was a two-thousand and twenty?
He said eighteen, I think one of them was a two-thousand and eighteen.
Seven eighteen, and I think that Owen's equipment actually had a, it was like a twenty. It was a lease to a municipality. They said like four-hundred.
So, how much did we use last year by renting or leasing it out?
I don't even know if we had.
That would tell us for that. I mean, the back truck's expensive. They would tell us how much we could do payments on it and pay it off fast.
Yeah.
Because that would pay for a back truck and pay for, you know, somebody else to have.
And that's what we're doing right now, because if we have to do a sewer lift station, I got to call Dog Lake thirty-one's with a backer.
We look at that.
You can get a real decent front for between the four and six.
Another thing, Sean, we need probably putting reminders out there to have people quit rigging leaves in the streets.
Yep, I noticed somebody was putting their rasc like they did it today.
Yeah.
In the street. They're putting them right out in the street.
And the reason, one of the reasons for that is because you don't know if there's a big rock in there. The street sweeper hit it. It's down.
Again.
See, most, most towns let you, let you rig the stuff in the street, like Corvallis and stuff, because they come and pick it all up.
Yeah, Corvallis, they actually have a street sweeper that's got a backer mounted on it. So, when they're street sweeping and they get a pile of leaves like what you're saying, then they just suck the leaves up.
All the leaves go in the street.
We don't want to go that far here. Let's.
Yeah.
The only thing I was going to say, and I know you really can't do anything about this, but I've had the same lady call me. I want to say for the last month, and I almost went over and took care of it myself, but when they put the sand down, the sand goes over the curve up onto her grass. She was, she was tickled.
With the sander?
Yeah. I said, "Well, we just got to get that off," so I went over and like did about a hundred feet of.
And some of that, that, some of that, I blame all myself because we didn't set it up. I mean, literally, we got it set up over there, and we had to have it used when it got here.
Well, that's what I said.
We can adjust the spread.
I said, "That's been, I said, "That's been going on for years. You just haven't noticed it." My comment to her. I said, "You haven't seen it." Then she looked at me and, "Okay."
Okay.
So, anyway, you could not put sand on somebody's lawn and.
There was something else, and just to keep you updated on what's going on with OHA. In mind of what happened with the stories and things, I am constantly, every day I talk to Russ with OHA. There's been some talk, they were waiting some results, all the results that we took for those samples. I don't know what the outcome is, but at one point, he was talking about perhaps maybe OHA would be putting some PR stuff together. If our levels were what we thought they were, which they are, they're, it's not, in talking with Amber, they're not as extreme as what has been posted. You know, the lead detects, we did three, well, we did iron, magnesium, lead. There was iron, magnesium, everything. No secret there. Three of the five spots were non-detected with lead. And that was one of the big stories in that OPB thing, that from Ben, that guy up there. Well, that, well, we just got three non-detected and two manual detects.
And we don't use well eight.
Yeah.
Which is what he was reporting.
And he was reporting on well eight, which is, we have abandoned it. We pulled the pump. So, you know, that's kind of what's going on with OHA. The DEQ so far is being good. They, we have a walkthrough. They're actually coming down June seventh to walk around our facilities. They're in the process of rewriting our permits because we're up for a permit renewal. We're trying to work with them because quite honestly, if they want us to sample and monitor like they want, you might as well add about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars into my sewer budget. Because every sample that we take, which is, their rough estimation was, I believe it was twice a week, is twenty-five hundred dollars a whack. That's your ramp. So, we're working with them to, because some of these samples they're requiring has absolutely zero to do with us. We don't make, you know, PVC pipe in Lakeview, and that's one of these big sampling sets is for stuff like that. So, we're working with them. We'll see how it goes. That's about all I got right now.
Good job.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay, McDonald Park, you guys have a change order in front of you? That is for the ADA ramp. And the cause of this change order is because Sean's storm drains are in the middle of the ADA ramp.
What?
Yeah, I know, right? The inlet for the storm drains right there in that corner. So, we have to split the ramp to make it a legal ramp. The initial cost of that was a twelve-thousand-dollar upcharge. But on the shade structure, they had designed a footing on the shade structure that we didn't really need. So, we deleted this shade structure and traded. So, it's a fifty-five-hundred-dollar increase to do that ramp. And basically, what they better do is pull another section of sidewalk out, and they're going to build two ramps there instead of one. So, you'll have one that faces to the south, one that faces to the west. And there'll be a small little island like what they've done on F that the state's kind of, that'll be a little open area with rock over grass or something. So, I kind of need your guys' okay on that before I move forward with that.
Could be my advice if you put grass in there or something easy to, they can get a mower in there or else put rock in there.
It's only the area about this big. I like to put rock.
They would put that like fake half rock that they concrete, like the highways.
No, those are actually real rocks that they just slurried in.
Oh, something like. Something like that, something nice.
Yeah, I don't want really grass in there, it's just never gonna get watered, it's never gonna get mowed, so I'd rather put some rock in there.
I made the motion that we approved the change order.
Second?
Second.
Motion made in second, vote in favor?
Aye.
Some other things at the park, um, there will be a, uh, the water line, Sean and I have talked about this, I've chatted with Michelle about it. There's an old galvanized water line that's in that park that needs to be replaced. Uh, the contractor that is doing the job quoted us almost six thousand dollars to do it. And, so I went and talked to Ken the plumber, and Ken, Ken will do it for us for twenty-five hundred bucks.
That's under cash.
Yeah, twenty-five hundred bucks, they'll do it in PVC, the only thing that he's requiring is Sean's guys will have to go over there, there's one section of crosswalk. And that's the other thing, that line runs underneath all that new concrete, the old line does. So the new line, we're gonna, it'll go in one section of sidewalk and that's it, and we're gonna move it over the fence and down the fence line to get it out with all that new concrete.
It'll something we're break. We're not tearing up all the meandering paths. We'd have that one section where.
Sean will have one section that public works will need to go over and take your thumper to thump the pipe under that, because we don't wanna dig a big void in the veteran concrete, it'll take.
Somebody's digging.
Yeah. So if he'll thump that under, Ken said he'll come in and run it for twenty-five hundred bucks.
Okay.
So, while the, uh, while the park's closed, is there any way we could get all those weeds sprayed? The dandelions, while, while it's closed, so the kids aren't playing on it and stuff?
Well, I have a plan for that, I was thinking about that today. I don't know about spraying, because technically we can't spray, because we don't have any license.
Well, I could spray at night, you wouldn't know. I mean, I could go.
I noticed when I drove by there today, looking at the whole, where the kids can have lunch thing.
Yeah.
And, I'm gonna go in there now, while I've got some time, and I'm gonna have the guys go in there and whack it. And we whack it down and mow it, they can, so if somebody happened to drive by in the middle of the night and sprayed it, then.
No, I mean, is there, isn't there anything we can put on that to, like, you can't put weed be gone on it?
No, we can't, not being a. Public entity.
Even when it's closed?
Even when it's closed.
We can't spray.
We can't even, technically, we can't even spray the weeds in our lift stations.
Because nobody certified it. So we'll have to, we'll have to figure that out.
Get certified.
There, uh, there will be another change order on engineering fees because of some issues that we came up with, with the water sewer. Uh, some de-watering issues that the engineer had to deal with, um, so there will be another change order, don't know if that's gonna last, I don't foresee it being very big. But I was informed of that, uh, yesterday. But besides that, everything seems to be going well, they keep saying we're on schedule, they're gonna finish pouring concrete hopefully Friday. Uh, picnic tables and benches will arrive on Friday, and they'll be unloaded in a parking lot, and then they'll be set after all the concrete is cleared on that. You guys have any other questions on the park? Hey, in your packet, you should have a call from Ainsworth on North Geo. That was the seventy-five thousand and a half score for improvement on North Geo for budget for twenty-two point four. This is what it's for. Uh, the current software that we're running up there is no longer supported and has not been supported since two thousand and eighteen. And we've already had a crash once, and I had to have them on the phone walk me through getting everything reset. A lot of the valves and stuff there over the last twenty-three years that that facility's been in operation. When they had an issue with a valve or an issue with the sensor, they just unhooked it. So none of the valves are working. The sensors are, have not been calibrated or updated in twenty-three years. So this, this needs to be done. Ainsworth said that if they, if, if council approves it to move forward, I'm not sure where you guys are on your budget, that they can start ordering everything and get ready to install it and not, we won't see any building until probably mid to late July. So even the next budget here before we're actually seeing, but, uh, building. But it's definitely, you know, every department has touched on it, it's twenty years of deferred maintenance. We've had a lot of issues with that plant since I've been here, we were on the borderline of being sued by DOC when I first started here because of flow issues. It's real, it's been kind of rewarding to me when the prison calls and says we have a problem with geothermal, and I go check it and I call them back and I say, no, it's on your side.
It's a first.
And that's, we're, we're at that point now. This update that we're looking at doing here, if the prison is also looking at doing the same thing on your side this year.
With the same.
Same company, yeah. Delta Controls is the proprietary supplier for those controls and the software and computers on that system.
What do you have on the budget for that?
I, I put in seventy-five thousand for updates for that, for the next budget, yeah. So if it didn't get cut, because I haven't been too involved with that and stuff, it should still be in the budget.
Very well, very well.
We'll talk about it very well.
The DOC?
Yeah, geothermal, DOC.
What do you say you budgeted for seventy-five?
Seventy-five is what I asked.
What do you plan on to do with the other nine thousand?
That will go into some updates that we actually have to do with the well itself.
Okay.
Um, but those aren't critical at this point. And the critical is this, uh, you could give them, uh, the, that system will run a lot more efficiently, um. Should be when this update's done, the power draw that we have, we run about seventeen hundred a month electricity up there. And we should see a decrease in that by, they're saying anywhere from fifteen to twenty-five percent, just in power. Because it'll start slowing the pumps down and doing what it's supposed to be doing, instead of just running everything a hundred percent. Probably see my temperatures go up that percentage to the prison, because we're slowing the water down. You slow your water down, it comes through the heat exchangers, your water leaves the heat exchanger a lot hotter, because it has more time to heat before it takes off. Right now, everything's just flowing through a hundred and thirty gallons a minute.
Is the seventy-five thousand, I'm not seeing that. Where's it at?
Should be in the DOC, geothermal.
Did you have immaterials and supplies?
It might have been, I'd have to look at my paper to see.
So that we have twenty-five thousand in materials and supplies, and then, um, GEO services and costs, we have thirty.
There's a fifty.
Contingency. And then the fifty thousand dollars for contingency.
No, I had, I had to go get my original, I had seventy-five thousand total for improvements in materials and supplies. I think it was, uh, forty-five thousand in capital improvements and thirty thousand materials and supplies.
That's under DOC, it could be there's something else too.
But this is very well, that's all, just there. So Michelle, we took out money out of the contingency and then before, you know, we just approved and added it to the.
Materials.
Materials and supplies. Then you can't let anything else?
Nothing.
Well, nothing breaks when we get.
Yeah.
Well, this, this includes a whole new computer system, and it, it updates everything, the current, the current standard.
All right. Nice job.
Yeah, we have to improve the budget.
Not done yet. I'm not done, I got, I got another page and a half here.
I have to leave at six forty-five.
We'll go through this.
I've got grand duty. I've got grand duty, so.
Does this leave a motion or?
I think yes, you think motion. For the budget?
For the proposal letter?
Oh.
Does it leave a motion?
Yeah.
Because it's over ten thousand? So we need one, okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the proposal letter for the one to create correctional facility pump house controls upgrade. Uh, sixty-five thousand and eighty-four dollars.
That's, that's already a budget item, isn't it?
It's in there, yeah.
Do we need to vote on that, if it's on the budget?
I made motion just because it double checks and we're trying to regain the trust.
It keeps us out of trouble.
Can you make a motion?
Go second.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Motion made in second, vote in favor?
Great.
All right, we can move on. Real quick, to the South Geo well, um, I put in a hundred and twenty-five thousand to act as a, we were gonna have some little issues. We did, I was trying to get it into June, so we could push it in the next fiscal year before we got the billing. Didn't happen, we broke the shaft, had to pull everything, we found the pipe was pretty rotten, um, Kyle has seen it. I don't know, did you go up there with him?
I did, I did.
Yeah, you may have.
I see different.
Yeah, you drive by a pump every time.
Yeah, you saw the little broken frame?
Yeah, the, the pipe's pretty rotten, we're gonna have to replace all the, uh, all the pipe, all the oil tube and drill, and pump shaft and that. That actually, we, we picked and weighed, we had to get it ordered, I talked with Charlie about that, and, uh, it ended up being just under thirty-eight thousand. We really need to stick a driller on that hole and clean that hole out a little bit. We have lost about a hundred and fifty feet of the bottom of the hole, which I'm not terribly concerned about, because that well's nine hundred feet deep. And they actually quit measuring volume at seven hundred and thirty feet on that well, but it goes down nine hundred feet. And we're about seven hundred and fifty feet up here with the well still.
Do you find any magma?
That's all.
Dinosaurs.
Uh, but anyway, that, that stuff has been ordered, I'm hoping it made the truck, if it did, we will see it on Thursday in Klamath. Klamath pump is doing the work on that well, they're the ones that initially put that pump in that system in, so they were able to find the high temperature casing and everything that needed for it. And if that comes in on Thursday, they should be good following weeks, so the hospital and school should have heat in the next two weeks if all the materials come in. Um, smart meters, all the contracts have been signed, the updated one has been sent to Michelle, did you sign and send that back yet?
No.
Okay. Michelle has the, the last final, for about the fifth time for Michelle, to get that signed, and then we'll get a notice to proceed and move forward. A lot of the materials have already came in for that. Um, we're waiting on some more brass, but that shouldn't be that big of a deal. And it will be moving forward with that, getting that project started. We're gonna be GPSing everything that goes in the ground and verifying pipe size, so that will fit in with our GIS system. And we recruited a recruit for, uh, an intern for the summer. So, uh, you know, no idea who he's getting himself in. Kyle's gonna be able to do that and actually get credit for his debris.
That's nice.
So, if I can help with that, that'll be, that'll be a huge help for Sean. So, we'll be working with that in the summer. Any questions on smart meters? I'm trying to just kind of shut this, uh. Uh, the water plant pilot study's over, and they're coming back to do more.
Okay.
They, uh, the results actually were pretty good, they got us down to point zero two on the ion, point zero two on magnesium. And they've got the clarity pretty good on it and the smell down. But their last couple of tests that they did, they feel they could do better on, so they're actually gonna come back for a few days. I don't have a scheduled date yet, but as soon as I get that date, I'll let you guys know. Their trailer now, their equipment's still here, it's parked over at Public Works, they left it here, they anticipated it possibly coming back another day or two.
Okay, good, good, I like perfection.
Yeah.
Being thorough.
They are, they're actually, the results were, from what I've seen and talking to those guys, they've been pretty happy with what they're seeing. Um, it's performing a little better than they anticipated, actually.
Good, so that's a positive. Wow, positive on the water.
Uh, they're just walking away.
Oh, yeah, that's great, fine, here they went.
No, they're, they're willing to come back from Denver and, uh, do another day or two of testing to check some different, um, chemicals that we could possibly use to help get us, they want, they want to be down to point zero zero two. So they're gonna come back and do a few more tests, um, probably anywhere from another three days. You guys have any questions on any of that?
No.
All right, we'll get everything moving forward.
Michelle?
So, um, I would like to have you guys permission to move forward with accepting a hundred thousand dollar, um, Oregon Department of Energy grant for community renewable energy programs. Um, what I, it, um, what I submitted for was to expand our GEO's thermal system on the north end of town. Um, what this does is it allows us to start planning on how that might look. It, it's not construction, it's simply planning. This is a six-month, um, grant, so it started in April and have until October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, to get through the planning phase of that. So, um, I would like, bless another council to respond back saying, um, if it permitted, that we would like to accept a hundred thousand dollars.
So, if, unless Dog Lake construction is a planning partner, how are they, like, what's their role?
Um, as a well digger person, because they're the ones that helped with the North Geo Thermal initially, and they have been very helpful. As a, um, assisting company, as we're going up to the north, they have been very helpful to Scott.
They've been dealing with all the leaks and stuff, so they're pretty in tune where that system runs and everything.
I'm just trying to figure out if we have to do bidding.
We will eventually have to do bidding, um, what the grant wanted to know was who, just to identify some. Um, I think what we're gonna need to do is go out for an RFP. Um, because there's a lot more to it than just a construction.
Just the.
This is a very rough, high, top-of-the-trees level of, um, allowing us to get down in to the weeds with like what we wanna do, what's gonna take. Um, part of this grant, and we'll go over it in a work session, will be, um, bringing in a facility company. Um, and we'll have to go out for bid for that as well, because, um, we have the capabilities in-house, but we certainly could use some expertise in planning on how we could expand it and what that might look for, like for the north industrial, um, businesses.
So this will give us an idea of what it can produce?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
And, and this is for the north end?
Right, the north.
Yes. So that everybody's clear, um, because I would really like to see us expand on both north and south end, but I only wrote it for north.
Yeah.
For this run.
Can I make a motion?
I would make a motion that we accept the OD, OE planning grant. Of the hundred thousand dollars to, I see, thank you.
Motion made in second, vote in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I have one more thing.
Oh, my gosh.
You know, me this guy, I just need to shut up.
On the, uh, the south well, I talked with John Shaw in the other day, who's on the board for the hospital. And he is requesting a meeting, once we get that well up and running, with Brian Brown, Daryl Anderson, because apparently Daryl Anderson has been working with the hospital under some consulting on their side of the system, and the school board, to talk about how the system could run more efficiently. And the south end system can definitely run a lot more efficiently, but the hospital and the school needs to get. And the south end system can definitely run a lot more efficiently, but the hospital and the school needs to get their system under control and slow the water down. They'd be able to pull a lot more heat, we wouldn't have to run, it's hard to keep overheating, if they would slow the water down and pull more heat off that water.
I thought we were talking about that last day.
We have, but we need to have an official meeting, everybody is in the same room.
Sure.
And I'm sending them water at a hundred and sixty degrees, and it's, and it, it's being re-injected at a hundred and forty five. So they're not pulling heat off that water.
Yeah.
And then I always get the complaint, Michelle has to listen to me rant and rave all the time, and our system's one that's screwed up, and it's really not our side of the system. Their system's not running as efficient as it should be running.
Is there a way we can have it approved? Actually, we have that approved, so that we, we can talk to them, say this is.
It has been proven, and Brian Brown has had a long discussion with Charlie at the hospital and with Quinn at the school. Quinn at the school has been able to slow their water down just a little bit, and they increased their, their heating by quite a bit. We had the same issue at the prison, and Brian came down and met with the prison, and it was all on the same day. They slowed their water down, they're pulling another thirty five degrees off the water, we haven't had a complaint since.
So before the meeting, can we have that in writing?
Mm-hmm.
Let's do that. Where do we have it?
I can probably get a copy of the email of Brian sent to Charlie telling him that their system's screwed up and he's slowed it up.
We need to have that, Brian, I want to see that.
Okay, I'll get that from Brian.
So, and lastly, um, thank you so much for attending the next Renewables Open House. I've heard nothing but wonderful things coming from the community.
I have too.
It was really nice to be able to pull the school in, um, for their culinary, um, I think they did a great job. Um, I, I'm really excited for the opportunities that it's gonna be presenting for the town. Um, and the, you know, change of economic development for our town, but so I'm really excited for what's next there.
And also, uh, that culinary class is doing Friday night, they're, the ups is Friday's break.
Bummer, how the else name river, sorry, guys.
Good for you. And COVID comments, are you done?
Do you have any, Mike?
I've been asleep for the last thirty minutes.
When we started talking, you went to sleep.
Yeah. Any more comments? Council have a comment, okay, well, adjourn the meeting next, uh, six thirty two.